All right, wave a hand and give people a finger, one or more. And let's see if we can get people to adhere to the time constraints. So let me know when we're ready to go and we'll certainly move on to District One.
Controller, if you can let us know when everyone is in.
Or we're moving the candidates over now.
Thank you.
We should have all the candidates on. Dan, Steph, if you want to turn on your cameras. I see everyone.
Kathy. And I will do one video now.
All right, thank you, thank you very much. Let's move forward. In District One.
Before we get started, let me make sure everyone knows the procedures. Good evening, everyone. You will each be given a moment introduction and then our moderator, Elihu Harris, will ask questions. You'll be given a minute to answer each question unless he decides that one of the questions deserves more time. But what we're finding is there are a lot more questions than we have time for. So I suspect we will keep it at the one minute. And then, time permitting, you will have the opportunity to give a one-minute closing. While you're talking, keep an eye. I will let you know when you have 15 seconds left. Yeah. And I will let you know when you need, let me get this right, when you need to stop. So even if you don't see all the letters, you know what that is. So with that, I would like to introduce our moderator, former Oakland mayor Elihu Harris.
Welcome to the candidates. We have three candidates in District One. Stephanie Dominguez Walton, Try No, and the incumbent Dan Calb. Each of you will have a minute to introduce yourself, certainly to indicate why you are to be elected, or in the case of Mr. Calb, re-elected to the Oakland City Council, and certainly what you would hope to do during your term of office. I'm going to start with Ms. Walton. And if you could introduce yourself and certainly give an indication as to why you should be elected.
Thank you so much, former Mayor Harris. And Kathy, it's wonderful to see you. And Try and Dan, Andy, thanks so much for having me tonight. My name is Steph Dominguez Walton. I'm a candidate for Oakland City Council in District One. I've lived here for the past 15 years with my husband, and we are raising our two children here in the city that we love. I'm a lifelong Democrat, Democratic activist and community advocate. My priorities are housing for all, equity in education and police reform. I'm in this race because the status quo is not working. George Floyd's murder and the pandemic have illustrated that our social safety net is failing too many of us. And when the status quo leadership isn't getting the job done, it's time for a change. I'm committed to this community. I am deeply rooted in it. I'm comfortable in all the neighborhoods in D1, and I'm ready to represent all the voices that have gone unheard. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Stephanie. Mr. Calb, you are the incumbent. Pressure's on you. Why should these people not replace you on the city council?
Okay, there we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, here we go. Okay, thank you, thank you all. Elihu, good to see you. Thank you all in the Democratic Party of Alameda County for all your great work now and over the years. As many of you know, I've worked very hard over the past seven and a half years to solve problems, big and small. I didn't come to be a council member just because I liked the idea of being an elected official. I wanted to actually accomplish things as an elected official. I spent my, almost my entire adult career as a public interest, environmental and social justice advocate and activist. So when I ran for office, I had over 20 years of policymaking experience, substantial experience working with large institutional budgets. And I took that experience and used that to get some things done locally. I have a strong record of accomplishments and I'm very proud of my record, whether it's fighting for renters, reducing displacement, environmental justice, climate justice, public safety, wildlife park prevention, pedestrian safety, a whole range of issues that I take in head-on. And of course, as we know, there's much more to do. I'm very proud, I have a lot of support among affordable housing advocates, environmental justice advocates. I'll talk about my endorsements later on in our closing statements. But I want to continue the hard work, and it is hard detailed work to get this done. And I'm very good at those detailed work, those details to get those things done. I want to continue that for the next four years.
Thank you very much, Mr. No.
Thanks for having me, guys. My name is Try and Go. I'm running for Oakland City Council in District One. I was born in a refugee camp. I'm from a working-class background. Eventually, I became an engineer that went to MIT. The Oakland I love is in crisis. Long-time residents are being displaced. Artists, young people can't settle here. Homelessness has increased tremendously, the majority of whom are black. And this is not acceptable, and we cannot wait any longer to solve these issues. And that's why I'm running. I want to solve homelessness immediately. I want to create housing. I want to create a public safety system that works for everyone. And to do this, I will strengthen our democracy so that it represents all of our residents. I'm limiting my campaign contributions to $35 per person so that you can trust that I represent all Oaklanders, not just those who have money. And I'm creating an online voting platform where all residents can weigh in on what the council is voting on. We have elected one progressive leader after another, and I am also progressive. But what I am committed to doing is fixing these problems. And I'm a problem solver, and I'm committed to every single resident. And that's how we will get things done.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Calb, I'm going to start with you. Obviously, this is one of the biggest problems we have in our city. And that is the issue of the pandemic. But more importantly, the effect it's having on incomes. Right now, there's a rent moratorium on evictions. It's coming to an end. Two questions. One, you believe that the rent moratorium ought to be extended? And so where do you stand on the long-term issue of just-caused evictions and other issues relative to how tenants may or may not be able to stay in their property?
Thank you for the question. I'm actually the, one of the co-authors of the rent eviction moratorium here in Oakland. And we already have extended it to the life of the emergency in Oakland. So it goes well beyond the end of this month or even the end of next month, however long it's with us. I'm also have a strong record of actually being the author or one of the lead authors of many proposals we put forward. I authored the Tenant Protection Ordinance in 2014. I co-authored the ballot measure in 2016, a companion ordinance, strengthening tenant protection ordinance with other measures throughout the past five years, several years. I've been a leader when it comes to protecting our renters from displacement and trying to make sure they're not pushed out as they have been in years past. And that's probably why I have the endorsement of the Oakland Tenants Union and other tenant advocates throughout our city and throughout our district. I will continue to work on those issues. We have a lot to do when it comes to helping our small businesses, who have been impacted by the pandemic, and the employees of those small businesses. I've worked on a number of policies to actually help them in many regards, including expanded sick leave. I have to stop now, but I hope I have an opportunity to tell you about more about what I've done to help our small businesses and our employees over the past several months. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Calb. Mr. No, what do you think is appropriate when it comes to evictions? I'm assuming that everyone's sort of sympathetic to the issue of extending the moratorium. But at some point, the moratorium will end.
Sorry.
What do you think should happen to those tenants who are now going to be facing perhaps seven, eight, nine months of back rent? Is there anything that you believe the city can do? Do you believe we ought to put in just-caused evictions? What can the city do? Putting on an extension, a moratorium on evictions is a good short-term solution, but eventually, the risk got to be paid. What do you think we ought to do relative to that rent crisis that many tenants in Oakland are facing?
Right, we need to definitely ensure that every Oaklander has access to housing. I definitely support extending the rent moratorium as long as needed. We also need to see what the downstream effects are on property owners. We need to ensure that they can pay their, their property taxes and their mortgages. So I would go downstream again to the banks and forcefully encourage them to forgive mortgages. We should also look at how we can reduce taxes on property owners as well so that we support the housing for every resident. And we need to inform all residents of their rights regarding, all renters of their rights and prevent them from getting evicted. We need to educate them and allow them to defend themselves.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Walton, where do you stand on issues like moratorium, just-caused evictions, tenants' rights? Whatever you think is appropriate relative to the crisis that tenants will be facing in the months ahead of us?
All right, thank, thank you for the question. I think lifting the moratorium is going to put people out on the street, and we're in a pandemic. So I support keeping the moratorium in place. We also need to find a way, and I would imagine through, through the state and perhaps even the federal government, to figure out how to get tenants whole again so that they can make those back rent payments. And, you know, yesterday, I got a call from a District One resident who has been renting the same apartment unit for 22 years. English is her second language. And her landlord asked her to sign a letter stating that she is not subject to rent control, which isn't true. The building was built in 1945. I see heads shaking. You know, this is the kind of stuff that's going on. And if we can't provide a solution so that, you know, we must put an end to predatory landlord-ing, and, and those people should be prosecuted for sure for harassing tenants. It's a direct violation of the Tenant Protection Ordinance. But we got to figure out a way to help get people whole. Because if we lift that moratorium and people are out on the street during a pandemic, I can't even imagine how bad it's going to get in Oakland because it's bad enough already.
Your time's up, thank you.
A major issue affecting the city, although some were not prioritized as high as others, is the issue of sports teams. We've seen the Warriors and the Raiders leave the city of Oakland just in the past 12 months. We have one major league sports team left, the Oakland Athletics. They want to move to the port or area, to the Howard Terminal. They want a land deal, both at the Coliseum as well as in the port, in order to make that move. I want to know where you stand on the A's, both keeping the A's, selling them the Coliseum out of no-bid offer? What do you think we ought to do relative to keeping the A's? And how far would you go to keeping the A's? I'm going to start with Ms. Walton.
With me?
Yes.
Okay, I want to keep the A's. I think that the Oakland A's are part of the identity of this city. And I've been, I've been campaigning for over a year now, and I've talked to thousands of people, many of whom may not be baseball enthusiasts, but they don't want to let go of their last sports team. And I think people recognize what that does for the city of Oakland in terms of creating jobs. And if we were to build a stadium at Howard Terminal, which I am in favor of, that's thousands of union jobs to actually construct the new stadium. And then that's jobs in perpetuity, union jobs, for people who would work concessions and people who would work at the stadium after it's up and running. I'm also in favor of the, the sale of the Coliseum site by the city and county to the A's so that they can build the meaningful affordable housing that they, that they are intending to build. I love the idea of making public transportation a BART stop and, and retail available to lower-income people. I think it's a win for the city all the way around.
Good, thank you. Councilmember Calb.
Thank you for the question.
Where do you stand on the A's, Howard Terminal versus the Coliseum site? The no-bid sale of the Coliseum site to the A's? Generally, what do you think about that idea?
Yeah, thank you for that question, that multifaceted question. Of course, I've been an A's fan for about 40 years, and I will continue to be an A's fan. And we are going to keep them rooted in Oakland as we must do. As a council member, I have a certain responsibility to look at the entirety of the package of proposals that will come before us, coming next year sometime, as it relates to the Howard Terminal, whether it's a final environmental impact report, the city port agreement, general plan amendment, rezoning, transportation plan, infrastructure financing requests, parcel map, the development agreement, community benefits agreement, and so on and so forth. Those are not in front of us yet. I can't say yes to something when I don't have that something in front of me. And in fact, if I say yes now, then we're going to lose leverage. If all the council members said, yes, we're going to do whatever you want, then we're going to lose leverage, and that would be a bad idea. So yes, let's give every opportunity to see what comes forward for a package of things at Howard Terminal. Let's keep the, the Coliseum site as a backstop because you can have a new ballpark there too as an option. But we need to have everything before us before we can make a decision. And let's not lose our leverage. Let's make sure we're tough negotiators to get what's good for the city and the A's.
All right, Mr. No, your answer to that question. Where do you stand on the A's move? Would you sell them the land at the Coliseum site? Talk about your position.
First off, I stand with the people at the negotiating table. I'm the only one that you can trust to do that. Because I accept a maximum of $35 in contributions for anyone. So you know that I represent all Oaklanders equally at the table, and that's exactly what we need. And regarding the A's, I love sports. I love the A's. And I support any project that would bring employment to Oakland, especially employment to the working class that have been here and that are threatened. And they've been here for generations. The A's have given a lot to our community, and we've shown them a lot of loyalty. And so I think we need to ask them to help us reach our goals of providing affordable housing and working-class jobs. We need to make sure that we don't displace union port workers. And what is the plan for them? Those are working-class jobs that we need to consider. And I prefer to lease the land because then it would provide a steady, long-term income stream instead of selling the land. And that's my position.
All right, let me ask a question. District One is a unique district. It borders Berkeley. Certainly, it's been one of the highlights of gentrification, high-cost housing. It goes from the flatland all the way up to the tippy-top of the hills, from, you know, the Golden Gate all the way up into Rock Ridge and into Montclair. I just wanted to ask, what do you think can be done to establish better communication and certainly more representative problem-solving and consensus-building between the vast different constituencies within District One? I'm going to start with Ms. Walton and then Mr. No.
So that's a great question, and I'm excited to answer it because we do border Emeryville, and we border different districts in Berkeley. And I think right now, given the situation that this pandemic and this, this economic downturn that we're in, you know, we're broke. And we have got to start pooling resources and really leaning on our neighbors. And I've had conversations with council members in the cities that we just mentioned and looking, looking ahead and working together to, to bring Oakland, Emeryville and Berkeley as more of an East Bay community so that we can grow together, I think is a really wonderful idea. In terms of, of working district to district inside of Oakland, you know, Oakland's District One is huge. It's, it's incredibly socio-economically diverse. And I'm comfortable in all neighborhoods. I have, I've been in COVID, delivering meals for 23 weeks to families who are OUSD, families who don't have means of getting to grab-and-go locations to pick up their food. And I'm, you know, I've got deliveries that take place at ApGar and West. And I, I'm all over town. I'm comfortable in, and have relationships in Bushrod, in Rock Ridge, in, on, on West MacArthur. I mean, you name it, there isn't a portion of this district that I have not spoken to and a voice that I have not heard. And that is something that I think is, is lacking right now in the district. And I think we can bring people together if we.
Give me your time.
Sorry, okay.
Mr. No.
Yes, the next councilperson has to understand that expanding engagement and listening and conversation, bringing more people into the fold is how we actually make the change we want. After this election, we can't just go back into, you know, the ivory tower of City Hall. We have to be out there in the community, understanding that every voice, every vote counts, that our power as leaders to make change is proportional to the number of people that are behind us. We can't, you know, no matter how good our ideas are, and we've had plenty of ideas in the past eight years, and where we are today is homelessness is out of control. That is just an injustice to, I, I'm from a third, you know, I was born in a refugee camp. And I'm seeing conditions that resemble refugee camps today. And that's unacceptable. I accept a maximum of $35. You know I represent everyone. I can't win this election without doing that. Finally, I'm creating an online voting platform that enables working-class people to weigh in on what the council is voting on.
Thank you very much. One of the major issues affecting the city is this budget deficit. Certainly, it's been exacerbated by.
Do I get that same question?
A what?
Don't I get the same question as the other two?
That, I did give you the question. That was your opportunity to answer it.
I'm sorry, Stephanie and Try answered that question.
Councilmember Calb did not get a chance to answer that question.
I apologize. I'm sorry, councilman. I apologize.
That's okay. Can you repeat the question that was, we were just finishing up?
It was the question about bringing together the disparate.
Yeah, it's very, very complicated district. Hills, flatlands, and I was asking the question of how do you try to bring consensus in a district with different kind of economic as well as workplace environments? Everything you already are facing, how do you deal with that and how do you build consensus?
Yeah, thank you for that. And I've been working on that long before I was a council member. I've been involved in policymaking and problem-solving. And in fact, I did 10 years of neighborhood mediation many years ago. So yes, absolutely, that's essential. And I've had people in different parts of my district talk to each other on various issues because some issues are neighborhood-specific, some are district-wide, and many issues are city-wide. And that's why I've worked very well with community groups, with our neighbors in other cities, with county-wide agencies that I've been on the board of and sometimes president of. We have to know that problems that we have, sometimes they're very neighborhood-specific. Sometimes they go beyond that. And I'm able to identify that quickly and go beyond one particular block to see what we need to do to solve a problem overall. And I will continue to do that. We also have to realize that while it's, it's a good goal, it's absolutely a good goal to try to, try to achieve some consensus, the more important goal is to solve a problem. And if some people are on the opposite side of an issue and they don't want to kind of compromise and agree to something, I can't let that get in the way of me trying to solve a problem. We're not here just to balance competing interests. Well, that's a nice goal. We're here to solve problems, and sometimes it takes bold solutions that some people might not like. And that's what I've done, and that's what we have to continue to do if we're serious about solving problems.
Thank you, and I apologize, councilmember. I was so busy with my next question, I didn't give you a chance.
No problem.
Let me ask this question. And I'm going to start with you, councilmember, because I think you're probably the best person at least to take a shot at this. Given what's going on with the pandemic and given its incredibly severe impact on the city's revenues, moving forward, does it get better anytime soon? What are you going to do to deal with the city's growing budget deficit? Are you going to make cuts? And if so, where will you make them? And if you're not going to make cuts, what revenues would you seek to enhance? And taxes increase in order to balance the city's budget?
Can you hear me? Yeah, thank you Elihu for that question. Yes, because of the artificially created recession, we have very real budget challenges in Oakland and statewide and beyond. So we have to take those seriously, as we have had in the city in the past. So, you know, we were able to, through a variety of mechanisms, not to do any big, major cuts, if you will, this past mid-cycle budget. But next year, unless we come out of the recession soon, we're going to have some serious challenges. And I've generally, when we've had this challenge in the past, I've looked towards, how do we find new revenue to achieve the services, to maintain or enhance the services that are, that the public wants? The public wants services by city government. And so those services are not always cheap, and they cost money, and we have to provide them the best we can. I authored two years ago the measure to increase the real estate transfer tax for properties sold of 2 million and more. That's bringing in millions of dollars to our budget. I support the idea of having an equitable business tax, gross receipts tax, that won't be in the ballot this year, but will a couple of years from now. And that will also bring more money in the budget. While there may be some temporary cuts we have to do here and there, we have to look to maintain services, and that's what people want. And that's what I've focused on successfully, time and time again. Thank you.
Mr. No, what is your answer to the question relative to city revenues balancing the budget? Where would you get the revenues or where would you make the cuts?
Right, in terms of cuts, I would take a look at the police department budget and see how we can increase our effectiveness there. We want, we don't want to send police into every situation. We want to limit the use of armed police as much as possible. We, we should eliminate overtime as much as possible. We can't have police officers working 13-hour shifts. It costs the city a lot of money, and it's not safe for the black and brown community. I would increase taxes on luxury property. We should shift everything to what is essential in Oakland to ensure that every Oaklander has, has the chance to be rooted here. So luxury apartments, you know, that's out. Second and third homes, let's tax those more to have more revenue. And finally, I'm committed to ensuring that government is transparent. And when we have that transparency and we have that trust, we can tell the people, this is where the money is going. You can trust that I represent you, and it will be used for the right cause. And I think we can increase taxes in that way. Thanks.
All right, Ms. Walton, what is your answer to that question? How would you balance the budget?
Yeah, I would encourage more housing, and I, and I would encourage that that be built with local hire. And, and that, you know, people working in Oakland, living in Oakland, spend money in Oakland. And, you know, we need to help lift up our local businesses who really are hurting. When, when this pandemic first set in, I made myself available to many of our local business owners and helped them navigate the, the system after the CARES Act was signed into law. We need to make it so that people who are living in Oakland can actually do business in Oakland because it just, it keeps the economic engine going. I also, when, when the council put forth the $25 million cut, it was Councilmember Boss who suggested that for starters. I think we have got to look at decreasing the police budget and shrinking that in a smart way by taking calls that could be made by social workers. Police are not equipped to go out and, and deal with a mental health call. To Try's point, the, the overtime has got to be looked at. It's not safe for anyone in the community for a police officer to work a 16-hour shift. And, and I've seen my stop sign now. Thank you.
All right, let me ask a question of each of you, and I really want a direct answer. It's a complicated, direct question that no one's going to be happy with the answer. But I'm going to ask it anyway, because I'm not running, so you guys have this pressure. Homelessness, assuming there's a fair share ordinance in the city relative to homelessness, and each of you had to put, I don't know, 700 homeless people in your district. Where would you put them? Would you put them in one location? Would you put them in several locations? And if so, where? I'm going to start with Ms. Walton, then Mr. No, and then the council member.
Yeah, well, so in, in District One, there are quite a few encampments that are some of the most unsafe possible living scenarios that a human being could be faced with underneath freeways. You know, the squalor, the blight. Some of these locations have handwashing stations and facilities so that they can use a bathroom. But this is no way for our Oakland residents to be, to be living. I think we need to make more facilities available for homeless residents. You know, recently, I just heard there's a, there's a development that's being proposed at the College of Arts and Crafts on Broadway. And there is a dormitory there, which, when I toured the facility, I asked, what is the, what is the affordable component on this potential 472-unit structure? And they said it was 10%. And it was 10% at 110% AMI, which is two teacher salaries for one unit. I recently heard that the, the city negotiated a deal to turn the dormitories into housing for homeless. We need more of that, we need more of that all over District One and all over the city.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. No.
Yes, I am committed to solving the homeless problem. I, I would immediately find homes, permanent housing for the homeless. I, we should look at every vacant property and find ways to convert them over to housing as soon as possible. I will impose heavy fines in order to do that. I, I have no problem with housing the homeless in District One. As councilmember, I would be happy to provide that service. Obviously, I need the support of the community. And as, as I've walked around the community, everyone is troubled by the issue of homelessness. And I do believe that support is there, but we need a problem solver. And that's what I will be as a city council person. We need to focus on increasing taxes on second, third. We need to focus on increasing taxes on second, third homes, luxury properties. We need to provide incentives for developers to build affordable units. We should do something like a green energy credit where there's a credit when you build affordable housings, and then that can be used in a different development to offset that, the cost of building housing. And so I, wherever it is fastest to house the homeless, we should do it there.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember?
Thank you. Well, I, I'm not just, you know, talking about ideas. I'm, I'm actually doing the hard work, often behind-the-scenes work, to make that happen. I was the one who pushed repeatedly, publicly and privately, to make sure the dormitory at the arts college stays in below-market housing. And I pushed the city to make an offer, which they happily did. And even though the college itself wanted to get a higher offer, we put pressure on them, and I and the mayor and others were part of that. And so that building will be for homeless families and homeless seniors, and it will end up serving probably over 100 homeless people on, on a regular basis, some temporary, some permanent. And that's, that's a success story. Second is, there are two affordable housing projects that I helped guide through the process over the past four or five years. One is under construction, almost done. One, one is not yet being built, but will be soon on the corner of West MacArthur and, and MLK. That will have about 120 units, over half will be for extremely low-income housing. I've been working to get more money into the homeless encampments on a temporary basis to have more trash pickups, more deep cleanings, more porta-potty servicing, until we find more housing. But housing is the most important thing, and I'm proud to have the support of many affordable housing advocates, which is why EBO, the leading affordable housing group, gave me one of their Affordable Housing Champion Awards this year. We have a lot more to do, and I've been working on that and having some success. There's more to go.
Okay, and we are about out of time, but we will take a one-minute closing from each of the candidates. Moderator, who would you like to start with?
Let me start with Councilmember Cal. Sir?
Dan, you're on mute.
Okay, there we go. Thank you, thank you all for doing this, offering this forum. I, I would love to have, as I have in the past, the support and endorsement of the Alameda County Democratic Party. The party will be joining the Sierra Club, the California Nurses Association, Oakland Tenants Union, Black Young Democrats at the East Bay, our firefighters, Unite Here, Local 2850, SEIU, 10 to 1, East Bay Animal Pack, and on and on and on. Many individuals, community activists from every single neighborhood in our city. My reputation is, I'm someone who works very hard, understands the policymaking process, understands that you involve the community, but you also sometimes work behind the scenes to get those nitty-gritty details done. It's not an exciting process sometimes, it's a very tedious process sometimes, but it's something that I, I'm very, very good at and had a lot of success at, but there's more to do. We have to work on problems, big and small, whether it's a neighborhood that needs a traffic calming, and my office does that repeatedly, or whether it's a citywide issue or a regional issue that we need a new solution in that regard. Climate justice, affordable housing, police reform. I was one of the authors of the ballot measure to create a police commission and one of the co-authors with Councilmember Kaplan to do a strengthening of that commission this year. I worked very hard on some key issues, police accountability, affordable housing, protections for renters, climate justice...
But your time is up.
And I would love to have your support once again. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mr. No?
The time for action is now. We don't have much time left. Oakland is changing so rapidly. I wouldn't be running for office if I didn't believe that this was the right time and this was the right moment and that I was the right person. We, we have persistent problems in the city. Homelessness is but one of those problems. We cannot continue to play small ball. We cannot continue to play politics. We cannot continue the status quo. We cannot be electing politicians. We need to elect problem solvers. And the way forward is to expand government so that it, it represents every single one of our residents, and I'm the only one committed to that. I'm accepting only $35 per person. No one else can make that claim. I'm devoted to the people. I want to create an online voting system so that you, every single person, can hold their leaders accountable so that we can actually get things done. So please join me in this fight so that we can create an Oakland of love and belonging for all of our residents.
All right, thank you, Ms. Walton.
Thank you so much for having me, Alameda County Dems, Mayor Harris, Kathy, everyone. It's, it's been a real pleasure. I am so pleased to announce a few of my endorsements as well. I just recently got the endorsement of former HUD Secretary under Obama, Julian Castro. And I also have the support of Assemblymember Buffy Wicks, and I cannot wait to partner with her should I have the privilege of representing you in District One. Oakland's District One needs bold leadership that matches the big problems we have with big solutions, and the status quo has not met the moment. I'm running as a leader who listens, who collaborates, and who will work tirelessly to tackle the tough issues like housing for all, equity in education, and police reform. Oakland is a progressive city, and many of us share similar values, but my value proposition is energy and leadership. And I promise to always operate in a transparent manner and make myself accessible to you. It would be my pleasure to represent the people of District One and the city of Oakland. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all of you, and thank you for not only your candidacy, but also your candor in answering some very challenging questions.
Stephanie, Stephanie, maybe you and I should, should give $35 each to Tri.
I love that collegiality. All right, you guys get together off camera.
That's collaboration right there, right on.
Holding you guys accountable.
Yeah. All right, you guys. We're going to move on if, if the council members from District, council candidates from District One would be excused, we'll bring on the council member candidate, council candidate from District Three.